Thank you. We've got our agenda in front of us. If we needed approval of the agenda, if we could, please. Give me a second. Any changes to the agenda? I'm seeing the agenda's approved. There's no business, new business there. Let's start with item A first. And we'll start with you, Mr. Evans.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't know if there's anything, I mean, A is the, uh, the original ordinance that was introduced and was subject of the Rules Committee meeting. Last time I gave a pretty lengthy explanation of it. Uh, it has been supplanted somewhat by both mine and Mr. Dunbar's S versions. So I, I think probably focusing on the, the two S versions would be the most beneficial at this point.
Could Mr. Evans go with the S version to change?
Uh, I'll, I'll just briefly, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Gates, uh, who can probably talk at more length about the changes. Uh, it makes a few technical changes, uh, corrections from the original version. Changed some dates to make them a little more realistic. Uh, the biggest change to my S version is it adds a, a provision on, uh, get the term right, accessible taxicab fleet permits, which is an all-new concept, um, that, uh, came about in conversations with, uh, Mr. Mustard and, and the Law Department. Um, but with that, I'll just turn it over to Dean, and he can run through the significant changes, if that's okay?
Okay. And then to Evans and, uh, to the Chair, I guess I'll walk through what's changed. If you have the Evans S version, um, everything that's different in this document, individual A O should be in bold. Um, I'll kind of push through and, and clean now. I guess the first one is on page three, section three of A O. Um, this one just adds, uh, dollars, and there's another permit type, accessible D permit issued since we're eleven twenty four six, which is in section later on in the document. Um, some other changes or just, uh, kind of housekeeping cleanup. Like the one at the bottom, page three, C and B, it changes some language about the permit fee stuff. That doesn't really have any substantial traffic. Uh, throughout the document, there's some places where we moved word limited, about limited permits. Limited permits, uh, haven't been used in years, so we're, uh, committing that section. Um, I won't get into that because, um, it's a language being needed. So page four, uh, there's just a cleanup in the middle in bold, additional, or we do a lot. Um, page five at the top in subsection C four, there's a change here that has an effect. And, uh, this change removes the requirement that, uh, an applicant for a permit has, uh, at least five hundred hours per year of experience operating taxicab as a chauffeur. So anybody that applies for a permit doesn't need, no longer if this passes, will no longer need to have five hundred hours of experience driving a cab. You just need a seat of a last driver's license. And then otherwise, be eligible, they'll give requirements. But you don't have that requisite driving for at least five hundred hours, then you're, that will do that requirement. So that makes it easier when the opening takes effect to, uh, be eligible for the permit. Um, let's see. There's some housekeeping changes at page six and seven in, in bold. Um, one change at the top of page seven, as you know, there's a five-year phase-in where a certain number of permits will be issued each year in place of the public convenience and necessity procedure, where it's determined whether any permission issued, we have this phase-in period. The first paragraph is about the first year of phase-in. Uh, as originally drafted, this contemplative passage of this ordinance is a bit earlier this year, but we're in November now, and if this passes, the dates in this paragraph didn't make any sense. So all this does is say, um, that first year of permits issued under this ordinance will be as soon as possible, as soon as possible, in two thousand seventeen. So before it said, uh, thirty days prior to December thirty-one, two thousand sixteen, that'd be impossible to me. So that's, that's the, that changes. Then by the way, years each year will be, um, allowing it to take effect, uh, at least by December first each year. So rest of those paragraphs for the next four years are, are not changed. Um. Keep going through here, um, there was supposed to be housekeeping changes. Here on page fourteen, hit section, uh, and then hit section eleven forty fifty-three, there was a reference, um, this basically would allow taxicab dispatch services to use a digital dispatch system. Um, in general, it's just like an app, like a yellow card. I think Checker both have an app for it, like Uber's app. And this just says you can use that app, uh, to arrange for rides, except it refers to a definition of what it is, and there's no definition out of rights ordinance. That was a carryover from, uh, a proposal a couple, a year and a half ago. So all this does is add the definition of a digital dispatch system for taxicab dispatch services purposes. Um, that just defines it as a system, as technology that connects a prospective passenger indicating their location, the taxicab, for on-demand transportation service in an integrated platform, um, such as the smartphone. And, uh, I think that that just is an acknowledgement of what's in existence, uh, present with some of the taxicab, uh, dispatch services apps right now. Uh, another substantive change on page fifteen, um, in the middle of the page. This is the, um, civil fine schedule, and, uh, there's fines for violations of the regulations. This adds three fines rather than the general fines, which were, um, brought up from a hundred for first violation and three hundred for any violation of the regulations. The addition here says you violate the requirement to have a permit, the fines a thousand dollars. And that's, uh, from the first, uh, violation. So if somebody's trying to, uh, drive taxicab, a permit for a museum, for a vehicle for higher fines a thousand dollars rather than starting at R. So that's to give it a bit more to, um, attempt to provide service without appropriate permit. Uh, I guess at section, uh, twelve, so you section added this S version, and that's the accessible taxicab fleet permits. Uh, as Mr. Evans mentioned, this is just a, um, a new approach to the accessible taxicabs. Um, this is designed to, um, allow nonprofit organizations to, um, serve, um, disabled persons and, or, and, or companions, uh, that those nonprofit organizations could obtain this type of permit. And, uh, it's intended to, I guess, make U-Chair accessible taxicabs, um, more available and to reach service demands better. And it does this by allowing the permit holder for this fleet to operate five to twenty taxicabs. All of them have to be U-Chair accessible, and need the requirements of a U-Chair accessible taxicab. They're described elsewhere on the document. Um, and we try to make this, uh, advantageous for such organizations and, uh, beneficial to him by, uh, making it, well, I want to say less expensive and affordable to obtain the permits and then operate. It does this by only charging one fee for the permit, where you can operate five to twenty cabs, and doesn't require a separate permit fee for each of the cabs. So the permit fee right now is a thousand nine hundred eighty dollars, and you only have to buy, pay that once for five to twenty cabs, they're easier accessible. Instead of that present, we'll have to pay that price for each one of them. This also, um, sets some minimum, uh, operating hours for accessible cab. They have to operate between six A M., six P M., Monday through Friday, um, generally business hours, so, uh, people with mobility requirements would have even more ability to attend appointments and errands during business hours. It's like, uh, this cab is free variable during those hours. Um. This will also, uh, exempt the permit holder for all those cabs from the owner-operator requirements. In section eleven twenty three seventeen, that section requires permit holder to drive their own cab, that they have the permit for at least fifty percent of the time that it's operating throughout the year. And this waves that, for that permit holder, because they're operating five to twenty cabs. So you can have a chauffeur who's to do that and operate and drive it, that'll be the outlet. Well, it's impossible to operate five of the percent time here. So that's just the acknowledge this, that situation. This also allows, um, an accessible taxicab, a D permit holder to operate around dispatch service. So right now, uh, each taxicab permit holder is required to subscribe to dispatch service and pays a subscription fee. And I might have stated this before, this correspondence, but it's actually off this, uh, nine hundred a month for one service fee. Uh, would like to try and do. Thank you, Mr. Sir. And, um, this is the, the holder of this project, instead of subscribing to those and paying those rates, could, uh, establish their own dispatch system, uh, upon approval of the, well, first, the transportation inspector would be in the system that they propose to say, yes, this substantially meets dispatch service requirements in chapter eleven forty. And second, transportation commission able to prove, uh, that the post would operate around dispatch system. Um. This is advantageous in a way by saving the dispatch service, these things have to pay, instead they wouldn't. So also would allow them, if that permit holders successfully operate the dispatch service, which successfully delivers, to also, um, offer that service to other U-Chair accessible taxicabs that subscribe to that, uh, D permit holder's dispatch service system. So, um, this might, well, it's just an opportunity, I guess, to centralize, uh, the dispatch service for, for the accessible ones. Let's see, um. This would also allow that dispatch service, uh, or if the accessible taxicab D permit holder sets to operate around dispatch service, now the different color scheme, the markings would have. Um, looking at page eighteen, there's still other items here. Some of them are just to enable these provisions to, uh, equate in place, um, process would be, uh, when someone applies, which you permit, they have to meet which living requirements. That's laid out in, uh, sec- subsection D. Uh, they're not really on this, but they need to have principally standard, standard purpose to serve services facilities, as I mentioned earlier, uh, they have to be located in this colony, and they have to demonstrate that they're ready and capable to provide vehicles under the project, at least five vehicles. And, uh, then subsection E is full requirements to be operate the dispatch system themselves. Subsection F on page eighteen, uh, it has the procedure for applications. Basically, transportation inspector determine if, uh, it's a legal, then the commission will review the application or if it's completed, then determine whether they should approve it. So, uh, the commission, this allows the commission to provide for exceptions, exceptions to other requirements of the taxicab regulations. That's just a, um, savings provisions in a way. If there's someone who sees all requirements that create difficulty, the commission could address it then, rather than having to come, get some code in, and rely with that takeaways. So, uh, yes, if this is passed, we'll see, uh, maybe we need to focus these combined. The rest of the regulations coming up, then we could address it by further amendment later. The commission will be able to house what they are, provide the, uh, exceptions that they approve. So, um, let's see. The, uh, next section on page eighteen, section fourteen, is just a housekeeping as well. It changes the, it just kind of gels with the new accessibility requirement. Um. The other two remaining sections are just to acknowledge that this ordinance deletes the limited taxicab permit. And, uh, that process through all the changes, obviously, S version from Mr. Evans.
Thank you, sir. Anything else to add, Mr. Evans? Before we go to Mr. Evans? Mr. Flynn?
Yeah, maybe I get jumping in at your. Mr. Dunbar, is your amendment, the form amendment, incorporated into your S version? Or Mr. Evans' S version?
So the way this came about is that Dean and Julia sort of went back and forth and, uh, identified some housekeeping issues. So I believe, and Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the housekeeping, keeping things are in both my version and Mr. Evans' version. Is that correct, Dean?
Um, what are, a couple of additional housekeeping things in Mr. Evans' that are in yours, I think.
Okay.
This is to identify some that are on both. Identified a couple of additional ones, just maybe in, in reference to limited permits.
Okay.
Um, if you can easily have it in yours.
Do some, uh, Flynn? Yeah, so I think what I, I mean, looking at this, doesn't appear that your amendment, especially for Mr. Evans' S version, because your amendment, your floor amendment eliminates a lot of language.
So, yeah, can I just? So I have, my amendment is basically one large substantive change. And Julia and, right, and Julia and Dean worked together and found some other housekeeping issues, some of which are in my amendment too, but that's not really what we're discussing with my amendment. And regardless of whether my version goes forward or Mr. Evans' goes forward, I think the housekeeping material, in addition to the new stuff that Dean just talked about, will go forward, and, and so will this, um, this new fleet, and as I've discovered about it today, um, that that'll go forward regardless of which version goes forward.
Um, Mr. Chairman, let me just make a request, and then I'll get to Mr. Evans. We usually don't have this many.
Quite this many versions of these legislative. So may I prospectually request, uh, prior to our next public hearing on this, that, uh, Mr. Gates and Ms. Tucker quote on a sexual analysis, that was sectional, just so we're curious. It shows how the different versions align and differ, so that we're just clear on what we're moving.
That would be nice.
Because this is getting really complicated right quickly.
After this, I want to go to Mr. Dunbar, so he can explain this to us.
Yeah, so that, that just, this would be helpful.
Let Mr. reflect too, you've got email on it. Ms. Tucker?
This is just an additional add-on to what, uh, Assemblymember Dunbar, who the Chair was, was, uh, was responding to Mr. Flynn. When Mr. Dunbar's request came to me, I didn't know, and I didn't know until yesterday that there was going to be an S version for Mr. Evans. And so the, um, Mr. Dunbar's work was prepared by me in two forms. And so the floor amendment, as it says on the top, is a floor amendment to the original, um, A O. And it, and it is simply an abstract, an extract of the larger document here. So I just did the same thing in two forms. Um, and then there was, just so that you'll know, there was a discussion that involved Mr. Evans, Mr. Dunbar, Mr. Gates, myself, and the clerks office about the problem about two S versions. And the, my understanding was that the preference of, um, those people, I was actually going to prove myself, was they had two S versions presented, and that we would carry those on to the S one. So Mr. Falsy was involved in that also. And so I think that your idea of the sectional out.
Sexual.
Sexual. Is, 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 is going to be very helpful, particularly if, uh, things are going to go forward.
Yes, to that clarity and the meanings.
Flynn and Mr. Dunbar.
That's all, that's all that gives.
Well, I, I think that perhaps we, we might be able to avoid that by just not going forward with my S version. If, if the Evans S includes all of my smaller proposal, uh, you know, has to be stuff and something else, then we can just go forward with that S, and then have my substantive floor amendment reworded so it applies to that S version. That might be the sort of, the fix that we go forward with.
So I'll be a little more clarity with that.
Yeah, um, so I, but before we move on to my, to my proposal, I'd like to ask a question of Dean and Bill regarding this S version. So when Julie and I were working on, um, setting up the auction system, I initially put, you know, the minimum bid must be nineteen hundred eighty dollars. And then we heard back from, um, I believe it was Mr. Mustard, you, sir?
Mustard.
Mustard, sorry, Eric.
I know, I know a lot of that.
Yeah, Mr. Mustard, that rather than put a dollar figure on it, we should cite the part of code where that dollar figure comes from. And so that's how we changed our amendment to do that. But in your S version, you still have nineteen hundred eighty dollars going all the way out until twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. And I'm kind of curious, why did you keep it with that dollar amount as opposed to doing a citation to the code?
The quick answer is I thought we did do the citation to the code.
Um, if I may, Mr. Chair? I think that was just an oversight to the question. It shouldn't have functioned. I guess.
Yeah, the, and the page three made a change that establishes the permit fee to the code, but it just wasn't eliminated in the tax. We agree with your change to make it tied to the, the code, not specified. Because I could change it.
I don't want to take credit for my change, it was your change you gave to me, I'm giving it back to you.
It's all, it's all of our change.
Um, but yeah, so that was in a comment I had on, or a question I had about, about that S version.
Any comments, questions on Mr. Evans' ordinance? I'm going to go to Mr. Dunbar. Dunbar, you've got two versions here, an S version and an amendment. Do you want to say this through?
I, well, I think we can just talk about the amendment, because S version, the cleanup stuff is all the same cleanup stuff minus some that's getting to Evans' version. So the amendment, and let me find it as well. This little guy here, so.
Section five.
Yeah, it starts at section five. And conceptually, what it does is very simple. So, um, Bill, uh, Mr. Evans, rather, set up a system whereby we increase the number of permits over five years using a lottery system where the fee to enter that lottery, correct me if I'm mistaking anything, Mr. Evans. The fee to that lottery is nineteen hundred, nineteen hundred eighty dollars, or whatever the amount is established in code, just now nineteen hundred eighty dollars. Um, we have traditionally, um, issued permits using a competitive bid system, uh, and a sealed bid system, which is often how the city sells things. And, and so what my proposal would do is to, um, keep the same number of permits, but rather than do by lottery, uh, do it by a, a bid process. And with the same minimum, with a minimum bid equal to the amount in code. So the minimum, which right now is nineteen hundred eighty dollars. So these, uh, permits, uh, if they are issued, um, the municipality would not, could not receive less money than it would under Mr. Evans' system, because either way, it's nineteen, it's at least nineteen hundred eighty dollars to get one of these permits. The question is, once you put in that bid, are you going to be outbid by someone? Or are you just going to be luckier than them because you got, you got it in a lottery? Um, and so I would say to, Mr. Evans' version, I think, is a little more egalitarian. So we might get, who knows, uh, yeah, and our roles once again reversed. Um, so, uh, we might get, you know, a few hundred, I'm not sure how many people will put in through the lottery. Um, and then, uh, some of them will get those permits. Um, my version, I think, will, uh, possibly, uh, lead to more funds for the municipality, uh, because I believe that we will get bids higher than nineteen hundred eighty dollars, at least for the first several years. Now, uh, the, the taxi owners, I'm sorry, the, the medallion owners, um, have said that these, uh, these medallions, uh, will decrease in, in, in value, or the, the secondary market will, will dry up. Um, but I believe that in at least the first several years, the ability to own one of these medallions, when there are still comparatively, there are less medallions than there, than there will be after five years, um, will still have some value. Uh, and I'm actually just, I'm also just curious. I, I would really like to see what kind of bids we get. If we get exactly, so how many, is it twenty-five or thirty in the first year, I think, of? Twenty? If we only, if we get just twenty bids of nineteen hundred eighty dollars, I would be extremely surprised. Um, it seems like someone would come in with a bid of nineteen hundred and eighty-five dollars and guarantee themselves the chance of getting one of these, uh, permits, rather than, um, you know, entering some kind of lottery-based system. So that, that is the substantive change. I'm saying that we should have the same number of, of, uh, permits with the same minimum, that we'll have a, a sealed bid process to get the, uh, to get the permits.
Questions, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Evans, you have a question?
Uh, it's not, not so much as a question, um, nor do, you know, it's just a place to debate the issue, but I would like to at least, um, put on the record, uh, my rationale for, for why I like the lottery system as opposed to auction. But Mr. Dunbar and I, you know, agree pretty much on, on the goal of this ordinance, and it's just this one difference between all these versions, essentially. Um, and, you know, I, I, and I agree with Mr. Dunbar on what he said about the auction and what's likely to happen. I think that certainly in the earlier years, uh, when we're still a few years out from an open system, there may be some incentive to pay more for, uh, a permit than the straight fee. The problem with it and why it's different than all the other places we use the bidding system is, you know, for somebody doing a road contract or something, they can look at the project, they can estimate their costs, they can tell what it's going to cost, and they have a, have something to base their bid upon and how much they want to profit from. With these permits, there is no, there is no really, it's completely arbitrary. Uh, it's just as much, it's a gamble as to how much I want to put in, how much I'm willing to pay for the permit, and that it's going to be more than the next guy. Um, and, you know, Mr. Dunbar received some information, I think, from Mr. Mustard on the, uh, the last bid. And I think the winning bid was like seventy-seven thousand, and it went down to somebody like bid twenty-five thousand. Now, and, you know, there's, and they get the same permit. Um, so I think that, that arbitrary nature of it is just essentially unfair. Um, it's competitive, the city would get more money, but since we're going to a system, we've already identified that this is like a, the goal of this is to treat it like a business license. We don't do that with other business licenses. We don't just say, okay, well, we'll, you know, you want to open a coffee shop, you know, put in your bids this week, and, you know, the top ten will get it. Um, and since the goal is to get to that place, I just think, uh, the option is a little too arbitrary. I, I too would be, uh, curious as Mr. Dunbar is as to what, what those bids would look like. Uh, but I, I think that curiosity is not enough to, to justify, uh, creating that just purely arbitrary number that the city gets for these, for these bids, that's all.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Woodson? Quick statement, then a question, if you ever heard of eBay? The way of the world. Um, so it, it seems to me the, the fundamental issue here is this market conciliation process isn't working. We're trying to get more permits out there. But that's what the market conciliation process is supposed to do. Is that right? Is it a market conciliation process, creating as many permits as there should be? Or, or is it faulty to whoever?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the market conciliation process, we, basically we got, uh, well, this is after open entry. If the number of permits issued has become a problem such that the quality services is declining, capitalizing at airport and stuff like that, customers are complaining about the nation service, um, then the taxicab commission would say, there's too many out there right now, put a moratorium on permits.
I, I mean, the current, right now, today.
Convenience and necessity.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah? If I may, John, I, I, having been on the Transportation Commission before, went through the process before on, on the convenience and necessity, I, I think it's, I would characterize it as not meeting the demands. And I think the, the evidence of the chronic issues we have of shortages, whether it's harbor shortages, whether it's geographical shortages, as you were referred to, uh, whether it's, you know, demographic shortages with handicap accessible. uh, whether it's, you know, demographic shortages with handicap accessible, is really the evidence that it's not working. And those, and those problems have been chronic for as long as I've heard about them, decades. So to that degree, I think the system, you know, I think Eric and the commission do as good a job as possible of trying to evaluate all these factors and, and try to, you know, be, you know, the, the great engine in the sky determining exactly how many permits are needed. But I think it, 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 it's a poor substitute for basic market forces that will determine, um, how many permits the system will hold. I mean, the, the, the data is good generally, um, the conclusions are, you know, somewhat guesswork, I think, from that. But I think the, the proof is in the fact that we've had this chronic situation for as long as possible and, and need a better system.
Other questions for, from some members? To gentlemen, if you can.
So, um, it's a question for Eric actually, the first I want to make a statement. Um, so, uh, you know, Mr. Evans described it sort of as a, it's a gamble when you put in your bid. And, you know, there's no guarantee of profit, that's certainly true, that's, that's the market, right? I think the mark, the gamble is the market, whether or not you make profits. Um, I, and, and the sealed bid is how we do things, like we just auctioned off the, that fire station. For some reason they came within five dollars of each other, which I find suspicious. Um, but one was one point two million, one was one point two five, you know, two million and five dollars. But, um, when you have this many, I, I, I think you would get a, a spread that people would, would, would develop based on, on the profits they expected to receive. The, I, I had originally hoped, and I spoke a little bit with legal about this, about having outcry auction rather than the competitive sealed bid, and actually doing like a traditional, traditional auction. And it sounded like that we don't generally do those except in various special cases. Right, we do them in various special cases and it just didn't sound super practical, so that's why I went back to the sealed bid. Um, but Eric, I wanted to ask you, I'm sorry, Mr. Mustard, I wanted to ask you about, um, the, the two different versions, the lottery version versus the auction version. And you don't need to take a position as to what you prefer, because you, could you describe what you think might be the differences in the kind of people who would apply, or the kind of bids we might get, or just kind of what you see might be the differences between the two?
On this, through the chair. Well, simply, under the auction system, that, that is present code and has been happening in the past. Because of the limited number of permits available in each auction, you know, the bid prices, even sealed bid reach a level that, that the buy-in for the average resident that may wish to participate is too high. And so, uh, it, it then generally starts, it, and, 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 and in a conversational manner, it gets down to, uh, the concentration of permits still remains within a, a, a more limited group of participants. And so really has just been, just, just limiting. You know, the goal of, of shifting to a lottery is really, no matter what, in all cases, there's an equal opportunity to attain a permit and participate. And, and that's the goal, is really to diversify the, um, the, the, the folks participating. You know, just make it more, uh, just more fair, uh, excluding the target.
I have comments all the time to ask.
Okay, so, I mean, we've heard that there might be a huge range of bids for the permits. So someone pays fifty thousand dollars, another guy gets it for two thousand, and they're frustrated. What, what kind of range are you seeing when you do bids, are they fairly close?
Through the chair, uh, yet in the last, uh, broad, uh, permit auction, uh, for the, uh, uh, non, non-disability, uh, gap, the high was ninety-one and the low was, uh, approximately seventy-six or so. It was a narrow window of those ten permits that were successful. And the disability permits, the high was about forty-six thousand and the low was about forty-one, five or so. So once they reach in there, they're, they're narrowed, you know, from number one through the last one issued, it's a pretty narrow gap. The bid ranges though, uh, were from, the general permits, I think, are low, in the, in the teens, uh, up to that ninety-one thousand. And then disability is a little bit, a little bit seven, up to forty.
Any other suggestions?
So I, I, just occurred to me, based on Mr. Webton's question, this might require further revision to my amendment, but I think this is how we would do the competitive sealed bid, bid, uh, auction, right? It wouldn't be like twenty separate little auctions. It would be, we'd ask for, we'd ask for competitive sealed bids and then we'd give it to the top twenty people. Is that how it's, if that's not how it's written, I'd like it to be that way. Because I, yeah, I, I do think it's arbitrary, and we started off with an auction, the first person bid fifty thousand, you know, and then twenty later it was going for twenty, twenty-five, you know, tw- two thousand dollars, and I do think that's a little bit arbitrary. But if we get twenty, uh, if we get, let's say, fifty bids, and the top twenty are all above ten thousand dollars, then those twenty people would get them, you know? Um, so there's something to talk about offline with the legal, just make sure that that's clear, that, that, that it's not like twenty separate little auctions. So, uh, shoot, there was another question I had, you hear Eric, now I, actually, I, I guess it was just, it was a comment, and this is why I said that I, I, I agree with you actually, I think that, um, Mr. Evans' version is a little more egalitarian. And you used the word fair, where anybody could enter and then it's sort of, it's literally luck of the draw, whether or not you get to be one of them. Where I, as I think the auction system actually probably will keep more of these in the hands of the current medallion holders, because they have the most economic incentive to own more of these, they have the capital for it, and they're familiar with the industry. Um, and so I think they will go, perhaps not, but they, they will probably submit bids for some of these. And at least in the first couple of years, it will make it a little bit more gradual. And I think that's also our goal, is even if there is a, you know, in five years, uh, uh, we're not on the mint entry system anymore, I think Mr. Evans would agree as well, that we are trying to make it a little more gradual with some kind of clip, that's why it is five years. And so my hope is that the, the auction system will also make it a little more gradual, sorry.
Mr. Evans, Mr. Webton?
Yeah, just two, two responses to that, and one is to Mr. Webton's sort of eBay kind of notion. I think, uh, the main difference here, at least as I view it, is that this is not, you know, a private market, this is a government agency issuing a license to engage in a certain business. And I, I don't think it should be left to, well, what, what are you willing to pay me for it? Is what we basically are doing in this bid, and I think, uh, it's not bait, it's just a matter of the city getting more money is the only benefit from doing this auction. It's not, and this goes to the second comment of Mr. Dunbar raised about the, the graduality of slowing this down. It would have that effect presumably, I think you see, as it gets closer to that five years, the bids would go down. But that graduality is only benefiting the city in the sense that it's not, it's not helping the permit owners in any way. Their, the value of their permits on the secondary market are largely going to decrease. Uh, it just keeps the city's sort of inflated, I think, income revenues from these permits declining at a, perhaps not falling up, but the permit market, so. But to the first point again, I think for issuing a government license, there's no reason for the, the arbitrariness of a bid, on seeing whether I, I'm allowed to operate in the city, so, that's all.
Do you want, do you have a, how come do you, Dean? So, a question for you, John, I don't know, Mr. Evans?
Well, it's not so much a question, but I, I see that very, very differently. I think the lottery is unfair and it really provides something much more important than just him to come to the city. But it ranks people, how much they care about me in this business. So you may have twenty out there, and sometimes it's kind of, it's kind of cool to be that, I'll get, I might run up the minimum. This guy wants to make his bid and he's really gone, oh, he's going to make this work. And that's why we have a market mechanism that allocates scarce resources, it's a fundamental mechanism. And to do a lottery, I understand your points, it's a government thing, but to allocate the scarce resource, it is better to put it in some kind of art, I think. And that's what Mr. Dunbar's approach does.
Mr. Gates, I've got just one comment, if we do go to an outcry auction, the city has an auctioneer's works list, and they get in with fifteen to twenty percent, I heard, if they're selling it. So if you can only get a certain amount, they're going to take a cut out of it.
So to be clear, I'm not proposing an outcry auction.
Well, I heard that, I heard the jury come up, I just wanted to tell you, we do have a procedure for a city auctioneer that we, we just recently approved a contract, so I want you to know it's out there.
Mr. Gates?
Um, yes, I just wanted to add a point of information, uh, related to who's eligible to receive a new permit. Uh, as you know, we have the, um, transferable permits, which were pre nineteen ninety-four. But after connection, for new permits that we're talking about now, permission, they require a permit holder to operate, use it itself at least fifty percent of the time that it's operating in a year. So I think that that creates too poor for who's eligible to receive a permit. For example, one person couldn't hold three permits and operate each one of them fifty percent of the time for the year. Do you understand what I mean? So I don't think you would have, uh, I, I think it was Mr. Evans, that people that own permits, they'll be able to afford in, in an auction system, uh, to bid high, they still, though, that the permit have to operate it at least fifty percent of the time for the year. So I don't think that, um, perhaps someone owning several permits.
Yes, Julie?
Um, through the chair, I, I have a question, Dean. In the lottery, uh, system, uh, in the Evans S version, when, um, when somebody bids and, and gets the luck of the draw, is there, uh, how is it established then that they're going to be operating the vehicle for the required amount of time?
I think that that would be, um, something you would catch when it comes up for renewal.
For renewal, okay, so in the lottery system, the, I, I was just hearing what, what the discussion is and I'm, I'm working on it. But in the lottery system, is there anything that would prevent somebody from doing what Mr. Webton suggested? Which is, put their name in a hat like they would for, um, uh, you know, going to, on the Denali Road, uh, and getting a permit, and then turning around and selling it to somebody who was really going to operate it on the secondary market?
They sold the transferable permit that they already own, but the new ones are not transferable?
Oh, okay, so the new, that's, that's the glitch, okay, thank you.
Other question for some members?
Just, Mr. Evans, just again, to continue the dialogue, John. Your points are well taken with regard to, you know, using the market to determine this and the event was most interested in it. And I think that would be certainly a more valid argument if we were going to continue that system. That your logic would apply really to not going to this ultimate open market. Because both, both versions agree that at the end of five years, it is just the, the permit value. So the only question is, at interim period, what makes the most sense? And there are certainly valid arguments on both sides, but I, but I think if, if we really believed, as you said, we'd never get to an open permit and we would just keep this auction system going, because that would meet the, the, arguably meet the requirements that, uh, you like in it.
Sure.
So I guess, it's actually a point for, for Sir Evans, but I'm trying to think the exact mechanism of how the lottery works. You don't literally pay nineteen hundred and eighty dollars and then get into the pool, you put your name in the pool. But then there is the, you know, you were talking about maybe, maybe someone doesn't actually want to do this or not do this. They're on the hook for nineteen hundred and eighty dollars, which seems a lot for me for kind of a lark, uh, right? Although, I, I do want to ask Eric or Dean, is there a mechanism, if somebody puts their name in the hat and wins the lottery, but then realizes, you know, I don't want to do this after all, how do we make sure that someone who really does want to do it gets that permit?
Mr. Mustard, maybe you can help, it just happened, I think, the last time, we sold a lot, they turned it back into the city. Eric?
I think it's through the chair. Under, under the Evans ordinance, it's simple, actually, uh, uh, under the system, it's a hundred dollar application fee. So if it goes out, anyone who wants notice is public, then we're going to have a lottery. The Evans come in, pay a hundred dollar application fee, because they have to meet all the other eligibility requirements. A daily, a daily draw, uh, when, when, uh, the, the, should the name be selected, they are then submitted to all the other permitting requirements. Because at that point, then they're submitted to the fees established in Title XI, that they will pay. Um, the, the ordinance provides that if, for whatever reason, they back out of it or return it to the city, uh, we can either conduct a secondary, uh, draw in, in that year, or just add them to the next year's, uh, lottery. And then, so, and then, and just to clarify, on, under the existing, uh, auction system, it's done to our purchasing department to send notices, the IDB goes out, and all sealed bids are submitted and there's a bid opening bid. So all the bids are opened and unsealed at that, uh, bid opening, and then the awards are made.
Right. Mr. Peterson and then Mr. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I'm trying to understand exactly how this auction would work. Is someone limited, could someone put a bid in, say, if you're going to auction off twenty additional permits in whatever year it is? Say I want to, my bid is, I want twenty, I'm going to pay twenty-five thousand dollars and I want, I want, I want a bid on twenty permits. But what would stop someone from trying to get a corner on the market?
Because you have to actually operate these permits. These aren't like transferable ones that you could, you have to operate them.
None of these would be transferable.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it would be hard to operate, how many of these permits could you realistically operate as one unit?
Through the chair, under ordinance one.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
So you're, so.
Okay, great, thanks.
Well, it's now a quarter to, Mr. Gray Jackson has to leave us at two fifteen. So I want to move on the agenda down to this ordinance we've got coming forward, dealing with the fee for credit cards. And then we'll move into public debate, public comments, really, public, three minutes to talk, Mr. Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is pretty quick and cut and dry. What it basically does is, um, allows, um, transactions, I'm sorry, oh, sure, thank you. And allow, uh, transaction processing fee, um, for taxi drivers that use a credit card. And the maximum that can be charged is one dollar. And Chairman Trainee and I were approached by the industry who bring this forward. Um, and, uh, on a personal note, not that I make decisions based on my own, um, personal thoughts, because I never do, but on a personal note, I mean, you know, this is what happens when you want to use a credit card. And a lot of us want to use a credit card for just about everything, mostly to get miles. I pay my M L P bill on credit, I, you know, credit card, and the, the fee is two point four five percent. Solidways charge the fee, N Star used to charge a big fee, and then they decided not to, and GCI doesn't charge a fee. They probably just have to make it pay because it's so expensive. But anyway, um, with that said. With, with that said, um, Mr. Trainee, do you want to see if anybody knows, wants to comment on it?
I want to see if any semis have questions on it. Mr. Evans, sir?
Yeah, I was just, uh, discussing this earlier, it's possible, and maybe Mr. Mustard or Mr. Gates can clarify on that. That's a substantive change, but I think it's possible that this is not in the correct code section, is that correct?
Yes, I agree, and, uh, it's, um, I'd rate it to, uh, the change, I think, in, uh, the eleven ten, I think, which contains the, uh, these, the tax caps, which is, you know, are allowed to show.
Thank you.
Other question, some members?
Not to exceed one dollar worth of dollars. Worth of, by one dollar, do they take a dollar?
Um, well, at first I think they wanted to use four percent, but, um, I'm, I'm not sure what, what the dollar is.
It's just easier to round, I believe.
But, yeah, they wanted to use.
Try to figure out percentages, you know.
So it's a maximum of dollar.
Because if you're doing, um, like a debit, a lot of debits will have a flat, you know, like eighty-five percent, eighty-five cents. So you do a debit card for anywhere a lot of money. So, but will not cover a lot of the credit card costs, that will just make it that.
It's a maximum of, of a dollar, yeah. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, is, I, I don't know the answer to this question, so, uh, is there a minimum fare that? is there a minimum fare that would be required to, to use a credit card? You usually have to be five dollars or ten dollars or twenty dollars before you use a credit card?
If I can impress that, Mr. Chairman, I've took a cab a long time to the airport, okay, and there's no limit to fare, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For sure.
That, that is an interesting point, though, that Dean brings up, sometimes people don't want to, well, anyway, um, sorry, I guess I have two questions. One, like with the surcharge for E nine-one-one, E nine-one-one, are we captured in any way impacted by state law? That's my first question. And then my second is for you, Eric, I believe as if you came in front of the Transportation Commission, but I know it did, as we talked about a little before, but I'd like you to recapitulate a little bit more. What happened at the Transportation Commission, what was the recommendation and why?
Uh, to the chair. The issue did come before the commission, they have, uh, three public hearings on the issue. One of the, uh, so, one of the concerns that, that the commission had was, the Yellowcap Dispatch made the request for implementation of a fee, using equipment provided by their, you know, computer, uh, provider, that had some incompatibilities again, and, and problems with it. And there was a lot of difficulty getting a handle on just what the cost would be that they were going to pass on. And so the commission was wrestling with that, and then by the third public hearing, the dispatch company submitted, uh, an alternative proposal, using an equipment and information, um, um, from a different supplier. And the commission at the time just wasn't convinced that it was not just passing on to the public, um, costs, general administrative costs that perhaps should be borne by the business. And so, uh, they declined to support, uh, a recommendation of the fee.
Uh, no, my second question was just for legal or for you, Ms. Gray Jackson. Uh, do you have any awareness of any state statute that puts sidebars on this, or is this unregulated by the state?
Mine, not for you, though, receiving mine, the Transportation Commission is only advisory, they don't have to go with it.
Uh, there's no state statute, it's about tax accommodation, it's a local concern.
Thank you. Anything else, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Then there used to be a block thing over a meter, to start a meeting, before you removed.
So there isn't, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
You can just tell pay cash, not pay the dollar. Cash works. Any other questions for the Assembly members? And what I want to do is open this up to the public, uh, the proper people, the chair over there, so they can sit and talk to them. You'll have three minutes. You can discuss in front of us any issue that's on this agenda today. That's from Mr. Dunbar, from Mr. Evans, or from Ms. Gray Jackson, mine, or, so, come and talk to us.
And I'll lift my fingers up when you're at two minutes, and you need to stop when I get to three, and I'm sure the chair will make you do that. And you need to say your first name and last name for the record.
Come forward and talk to us. We have till two thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Assembly, I'm Jim Brennan, we're here representing COA, the Taxpayer Permit Owners Association. First, I've got a question, I'd just like to put it out there, and we don't need an answer right now, I'd like to get one, which is whether these fleet accessible permits will be allowed to take, uh, non-handicap passengers as the current handicap accessible vehicles can. Because that ends up with, most of their customers are non-handicaps. I'm here on the first agenda, I mean, I'm, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, I wanted to verify that all Assembly members have received a recent handout that I hope was emailed to you all regarding some additional information concerning the effects of open entry. Uh, is there anyone that didn't get that, because I have ten copies here?
Um, you need to clarify who it's from, Mr. Dunbar.
Uh, it was sent by Susie Smith.
I, I think you probably have all kept it in your inbox.
Okay.
Well, she just knew, was give a copy to the clerk, and she'll make sure all eleven members have a copy.
Okay, Sharon, if any, if any member needs one, I've got it here. Otherwise, I wanted to, to basically challenge this assumption that there is some kind of chronic shortage of tax gaps in Anchorage. We have a system which designed currently to make up for any shortage by showing the public convenience accessibility for permits. That system has worked well for over fifty years, and right now, we have had, um, more permits, fourteen more permits issued in the last, since twenty-ten, whereas the population increase of Anchorage has not gone up nearly to that extent, which is, did it on basis, basis of the ratio of the number of, uh, permits per population, we would only issue four since twenty-ten, but we've issued fourteen, um, or fifteen, actually. Second thing is, the study of, has shown that, this is by Mr. Musser, shown that the, the average waiting time is nine minutes. That stacks up very well nationally. There was a study, uh, two thousand, two thousand and seven, at the time that Anchorage voters rejected, overwhelmingly rejected open entry, where it found out that Anchorage's waiting time was far better than, as the, the case national. Thirdly, this, uh, assertion that was made at your prior meeting, that the statistics from Mr. Musser's work showed a need for forty-seven to fifty more permits, forty-seven to fifty, that's not borne out. What that was, is it showed that at any given time, only seventy-nine percent of the hundred and eighty-eight issued permits are on the road. Is that really so amazing? There are times when people are on vacation, there are times when people are ill, there are times when taxi cab vehicles are being repaired, and there are times when, uh, uh, an operator, a driver, is not driving a full twelve straight hours. How many people in this life do we require to work twelve straight hours at their job?
Thank you, sir.
I see my time's up.
Time's up. Question for Assembly members? Thank you, sir. Any bills wish to talk to us? Welcome, sir.
I am George Redon. I be here in Appleby for the last forty-two, forty-three years. I start from the beginning, when the taxi permit that value, it was only two hundred and fifty bucks. My accent and my voice is a little, little heavy, but I have a copy, so I try to explain to the whole Assembly member right here to see what's going on. If the deregulation coming and the Uber coming, be signed to maybe hundred fifty wheelchair from the municipality support running the state. I no believe to we need any more taxi program, except, no except, no including fifteen chairs or twenty-five wheelchair vans more. I think that's ridiculous. I believe to the Assembly members have to check more deep to what happened to the people working for twelve hours and pay twenty, thirty bucks and sometimes have to pay the list from their own pocket. Then that's the reason I put in all my, my issues and the papers I give to you to make it my, my two minutes, or my three minutes to explain everything. This is my speaker, so I try to explain what's going on, but I believe to, you understand, the little scratches, I'm sorry for the little scratches we have in the paper right there, through I find it straight to last night, to we have it almost seventy A B C or B, B A C, another, another limousine, to pick it up anywhere and drop to airport, pick it up on the airport and go to anywhere. That's all in my thirty-one.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Assembly members? Thank you, George, good to see you again. Any bills wish to talk to us, if anything? Thank you, George.
I do, sir, okay.
Yep, sir. Give us your name, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, sir, my name is Augusto Alvarado, and I've been involved in the cab business for about thirty-six years, on and off. What I strongly believe is that in this industry, we have two components, the dispatch service, operators and the drivers. It's very, very stressful that the operators and owners have so many rules on us, and the dispatch services don't have nothing. And you know what it plays that to the views that we go every day by the dispatch company, which is Yellowcap, that I belong to. They steal our chips. Believe me, they steal our chips every single time. And they reject our work for little things that happen. And I strongly believe that they bill, especially on those Medicaid charges, they bill to the government and they skim the money. And they could reject, seal in our work, and there is nowhere we can go to cash it. There is nowhere we can go to ask for our money. So I think Yellowcap skims the money, and I believe that because when I argue about it with the owners, with their, with their managers, their answer is, read the paper, we pay. Do they do to everybody? I ask them, do that. They say, okay, why don't you, you guys put in the envelope and we pay you? That means they're not paying from their pockets. That means that they booking the money and they scheming. And the other, another thing is, no matter how many cabs we are, we're gonna put on the road, you're not gonna fix this problem of service. We're not gonna give a good service to the people of Anchorage, is because it's very simple. When the customer have to wait ten, fifteen minutes to order the cab, and the cab show up in three or four minutes, you can figure out whose fault is this. And they do every single time, every single day, they go into the recorder in volume of calls, which is not true. If the customer says, I wait for three minutes till you show up here, there is no volume of calls, sir. And another thing is that in, 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 uh, in, excuse me, I forgot my line. But, the truth is that if we don't put no rules into those dispatch companies, we will never ever give, give a good service to the people of Anchorage. So we have to look at that way. It's not only us, it's the dispatch service as well. Now, you guys are debating about a dollar charge in the, in the, in the credit cards and everything. As a owner, I pay nine hundred and fifty dollars for their service. Why, where is that dollar or fifty cents, twenty cents for the drivers? Anything for us?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, I actually have a question, if you want to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr., is it Alvarado?
Alvarado.
Thank you, so I guess my two, I have sort of two related questions. The first is, you said we need to put rules on dispatch companies. What kind of rules do you think would work? And then my second question is, why do you think there are more dispatch companies in Anchorage? Why are there so few, I mean, there's two and maybe effectively one, but there, there, you know, why aren't there more dispatch companies?
It's a monopoly, sir. It's a monopoly. Yellowcap is the monopoly thing. They, they love to have a good format, because the money is for them, because everybody goes to Yellowcap because they have the monopoly.
So what, my, my first question again, what kind of rules would you suggest you think could improve dispatch services?
First of all, I think, I did, uh, the Yellowcap dispatchers or the Yellowcap employees, they should take the same training as the drivers, period. So they can understand the scope of their work and how important it is, their performance, especially in the safe. I had a, I had a, a mountain view. I had a customer that he said, the only reason I don't shoot you is because I don't want the car crash. When I, when I put my beacon of emergency on, the dispatcher called me to ask me what she's gonna do. She said, what do you want me to do? And the customer right behind me. Are they really trained to, to, uh, to, to, I mean, to act in cases of emergency? For the sake of the people, for the sake of the drivers? How come I pay a hundred and fifty dollars so my driver can get trained? The Yellowcap don't, don't train their people. They hire anybody, the telephone people are playing in their, in their cellphones when the, when the lines are going on and on and on, so the customer is waiting ten, fifteen minutes just to order the cab. That's not a good service. They don't respond to nobody.
Thank you, Jeanne, any questions, Assembly members? Thank you, Ms. Alvarado.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Assembly? Anybody else wish to address the Assembly on this tax ordinance? Hello, sir?
Kevin Ruston, I'm a driver, not an owner of a permit. I'd just like to say immediately, first off, I'm always very appreciative of all the hard work that the Assembly members put on it, because I know there's certainly several other issues that we're going to be dealing with, taxi limousine commission also. Three minutes to plead for one's livelihood or, you know, unfortunately for some people, their life savings, but I'll give it a go. The ordinance is, it's currently written, would, the overcapacity would completely wreck the industry. There's no doubt in my mind, I say that as a longtime driver, I think that would be the general consensus of most drivers, and obviously, most owners of the permits. That's not to say that there aren't any issues, obviously extremely legitimate, that this, the council and, um, Assembly always bring up, that needs to be addressed. But it always seems to be more stick than character. We always end up with the same answer, more cabs, and that clearly isn't the only thing. Well, it, I know we come from all different economic stripes here, um, if we were to look at like some past economic history in the United States, you clearly see overcapacity wrecking the industry. I have to pass, you know, railroads, airlines, we've talked about all the defunct ones, fishing industry, you can clearly do tremendous amount of damage in a short period of time. But taxis, in most cities where they are permitted, have always worked as an adjunct public transportation. And the trade-off is, you get to set the prices, you get to set the rules. Not the same when the path that we're heading down, which would be complete deregulation. You have price gouging that you have to worry about, you have discrimination issues, the same type of some of the issues that you're facing now, that people are going to be underserved in some areas. But you, you can actually work with the current system. It's a good system, I'm not saying it's perfect, but going down this path, I feel you give up your rights to control the industry. And to me, um, besides the revenue you get from legitimate, uh, sales of the permits, you basically, you're selling your birthright for a bowl of porridge. There's nothing that you'd be able to say once, it's basically all private industry, you don't have any control over it whatsoever. So I appreciate your work, um, I'll just let you know, it's, it's a tough issue, there's a lot of people whose livelihoods are out here. And I can tell you, you've all probably ridden a cab, I can tell you, I've not driven one or not all.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Assembly members? Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, one of the reasons that these new pieces of ordinances were written is because we have a problem getting taxis downtown during bar break. There's also a problem getting taxis to serve Girdwood and Eagle River. If, uh, under the current, uh, system, if we could solve those problems, we, we wouldn't need to, to do these, uh, these changes. So what would be a solution that you would suggest?
Having just last week spent the whole week out in Eagle River, I, I can tell you that the, the reason why cabs don't actually service it as well as they should is because of economic reasons, which would be, the business unfortunately is not there, for the same reason for years that they didn't have a high school. That's not to say that it can't be solved. I would recommend a system I would recommend a system where if a driver, since the, the city obviously doesn't like surcharges, issues like that have been brought up before the commission, to service a different area. It doesn't have the population density or the, the services out there that somebody might be going to. But the trips that the business could be built up on could be rewarding a driver for spending time or servicing a trip that once they come back into an area like Anchorage, that they would be rewarded by some type of algorithm that would be fair, obviously a little bit of experimentation, where they would be bumped up like, let's say, in the system. Currently, right now, you enter a zone, whatever, you just discharge a passenger. I don't want to get too complicated, but you are now the last in the queue, you're the last one. So you could enter midtown Walmart, drop off, and now you're number fifteen. But let's say if you did take a trip from Eagle River to bring somebody from Eagle River and now come back in to Anchorage, you, you could re- reward them by placing them first in the zone. So there, there are other, there are other, you know, alternatives. But I, I would say for every, you can even do it by time, the amount of time. Same with Girdwood. But I will say, most of the trips that people know about that are long, people more than willing to service them. It's the short trips that would be trouble. Somebody just traveling from a couple of blocks away to Walmart in Eagle River. Yeah, that, that would be, it would be tough to want to get a driver to leave Muldoon to even head there. Same with the handicap.
John?
Thanks. So if you, if the system is changed, would you try to get a permit for yourself? You don't have a permit now.
I, I don't have a permit now.
Would you try to get a permit then?
I, I think, to truthfully, from my own sense, I've been driving fifteen years. But the whole uncertainty of ownership of these permits, you know, precluded me from any desire. You know, originally, you know, I did think about it, but it's unfortunate that, besides taking the economic risk, I think we all know that unfortunately the economy is contracting right now. It's not growing for Anchorage. Oil was forty-five dollars a barrel today. The other part of it is, is that there, there seems to be this reluctance to describe it as anything. They don't want to say it's property, they don't even want to say it's a lease. I, I would have to say, you're basically issuing death certificates to people. These people, when they buy those transferable, non-transferable permits, have locked themselves into doing that job, regardless of the health issues, family issues, whether they have, that's a big risk. And I think they take that risk, but they don't take the risk that there's gonna be, I don't want to say willy-nilly, but not a very strategic reason for expanding the fleet. I think they were all very open, the people who bought the permits knew they got the permits, plus the system expanded. But I don't think they particularly are comfortable with the idea that it wouldn't be done in any type of scientific manner. The needs and necessities, not to say that there weren't issues with them, and Mr. Evans has been on the commission for years, you'd know. But there are ways that you could basically feel like you want people to do the job. I'd even make a good argument, right for now, right, that, that there's overcapacity. You could easily find out, well, I shouldn't say easily. You could find out information, how long drivers go without a trip. So it, it, it's easy to wreck. I, I know that, you know, we, we like this idea that, you know, market forces, but the same market forces that prevent somebody go out to Chugiak to bring somebody four blocks is the same thing that operates for like, let's say, even for the, the auction that you talked about.
Thank you.
So I have two questions. The first is, I'd love for you to follow, to follow on with Mr. Alvarado's comments about dispatch companies. This is new to me. So your experience as a driver, how has it been with, do you think there are issues with dispatch companies in the way we've structured that? And then my second question is on, on, on John's, John's question to you. You know, these, if we go with the lottery basis at least, it'll be nine hundred eighty dollars per one of the cabs. Do you think we will get no bids?
Oh, you'd certainly get bids. I mean, but I think that shows more the desperation of people wanting to find themselves a job. I don't know if there's anything to jump on.
That's an interesting way to phrase it. So the fir-, the first question then, on the issues with dispatch companies, do you see any issues there? Is there any kind of rule change?
I, I don't think there's any business that, you know, is subject to improvement. This business probably is a little bit unfortunate because it tends to be regulated, set up the rules. And I can see people have a ideological, you know, opposition to imposing rules on people. But some of those rules are put in there to make it fair for everyone. You know, at one time, they, they were, there was a rule that they were trying to put in that, that the, you wouldn't necessarily dispatch the first person that was in the line to get the trip. And at that point, I'd have to say, since the, the ordinance mandates that you are attached to a radio-controlled dispatch company, that there would be some obligations that you would have to make regulations about the, the dispatch company.
Any else have a question?
Thank you.
Oh, is that you?
John?
Go ahead.
Are you spurred another? So you mentioned that if it were open entry, then the city should give up its right to set the pricing. Would that be a good thing? To let?
No, I, I think...
Open entry, no price controls?
Once again, like I said, I would say, as an adjunct to public transportation, you have an opportunity to say, all right, we realize, you know, bus service isn't the best. We can't make the investment in it. Hopefully for, not just consumers themselves, but for businesses, that you have employees that are able to get to work. We do see a, I don't want to say a surge by any means, but you see customers that come in, like, let's say, on a Saturday and Sunday, that normally wouldn't take a cab, but take it because they have to go to work or come back from work. What I'm saying is, is if, if you look at some of the models that are out there for cities that do not regulate it, then you have that, that contracting that takes place maybe while they're picking the person up. It's a snowy day and you need to get to the airport. Well, I, I want to charge you four times the amount that you would normally pay. And you see that in private markets. People tend to think like, well, gee, more competition. But what happens is, you get this period where you are kind of perfectly competitive, where you'd say, okay, you're driving the prices down, the margins are getting thinner. But then overcapacity comes in and then people drop out of the market. A lot of reasons why they mentioned like that they have a problem at bar break is because you have to have the drivers stay out and be willing to hope that they get a good trip for hours sometimes, that they can go hours without a trip. So, you know, to, to say all of a sudden that the problem would be solved if you put more cabs on, that's probably a little disingenuous. It hits a point where somebody's gonna value sleep over the eight dollars that they may make for staying out three more hours.
Any other question, John? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
And then we're talking about surge, but we're again with the issue of Uber. Uber had a surcharge that kicked on every now and then because they decided that it matters so much. Uber just kicked on. And so that was always a problem for us too when we were dealing with Uber, but Uber was, how do you know you're not in surge condition based on the snow? Anybody else wish to testify in front of us? We've got about ten minutes left and I'm about to cancel this. We've got another meeting coming up. Welcome, sir, what is your name?
Yeah, William Coburn. I'm a taxi captain and owner. I'd like to follow up on something Mr. Brennan asked about the handicap, the sweet handicap that are contemplated. Doesn't, doesn't seem to be a definition of handicap there. Because handicap can be, can be very large. It could be people who are, you know, wheelchair assistants or it could be other types of handicaps. So are they gonna be able to take able-bodied customers? And if you're contemplating putting on twenty cars a year and a portion of those will be handicapped, if somebody comes in with a fleet, if one of those nonprofits comes in with a fleet of five to twenty cars, wouldn't that negate the need to put on those twenty cabs on the street that are, that are handicapped necessarily? Seems to me that would take care of that, that shortfall in service. It would address it and, and you don't need to put those, those handicapped permits on as every year through a lottery or however you're gonna put them on. Mr. Dunbar, you also asked about why there's only two dispatch companies in the city. The reason for that is you have to have a large enough number of cars to service the whole city. You need a car in every zone. If you've ever seen a zone map of the city that the dispatch companies use, you, it's designed to have a car within ten minutes of every trip if there is a car in that zone. So drivers going close to that zone and they know they're gonna get the next trip, you know they're within ten minutes of it, the way it's broken down. You know, a car, a company with one or two or three cars or that, you see this provision here that you can have your own dispatch service, whatever, wouldn't really cover the city. It wouldn't, there's no way they could be fifteen or twenty miles away from a trip. And that's why everybody, that's why we use a centralized dispatch. We pay the dispatch fee.
Anybody else, sir? Questions, let me hear them. Thank you for your testimony, sir. So good to meet you, sir.
Hi, my name's Bob Ranton. I'm a driver since seventy-nine, operator, owner. I opened a dispatch company in two thousand eight called Aurora Taxi. One of the other reasons that it wouldn't, it wouldn't fly, not only was he saying about that, about having enough vehicles to cover the calls, the economic part, I had twelve vehicles. You need at least twenty-five to cover the cost of the, of the dispatch service. But I wanted to talk about, I'm confused about the timing of putting these, these extra cabs on the road. Like Mr. Brennan said, we already have a system that works, right? I think nine minutes to get a cab, I think Mr. Musev had surveys that showed that also. You're putting the cart before the horse. Uber's gonna be back sooner or later. And I think that'll, that'll fill the need for any other transportation needs the city has. Also, the population, there was an article in the Daily News just a few weeks ago. Population of the state is down in the city. We're in a recession. Unemployment rate in the U.S. is six point nine. Alaska's three point nine. And, I mean, the, the other way around.
Yeah.
Six point nine in Alaska, three point nine in the U.S. And it's gonna get worse. We're, we're entering recession here in Alaska. You all know, the, the oil price is down. The oil companies have been laying off and it, it's gonna trickle down more and more over the years, the next few years before it gets better. Also, there, there is a, there's a section in Title XI, I'm, I'm not sure of the exact number, but it, there's a section that says, the title is to ensure that the driver makes a livable income. With the flood of these new cabs, the drivers are not gonna make any money. And I'll be surprised, maybe even beginning you're gonna get guys committed to bid on these permits, but in the long run, people won't be willing to buy them. I mean, as it is now, they barely make a livable income. I know that as a driver, I've driven, I haven't driven in the last year and a half. Anyway, there is provision in the title. So you'd be going against the title unless you change that provision. And I can get you that number sooner or later, I haven't read the title recently. So there's a lot of aspects to the timing of, of putting these permits on. Also, if you only sell thirty permits at the nineteen eighty price, the last time you put the permits out, the city made one point one million dollars on the, on the permit. So why are you risking losing all that revenue in a time when we're having services cut because of the recession and, and the state not, you know, contributing to the city's revenue? So there's a lot of aspects to consider that. Especially if Uber comes back, which they will, the cab industry's gonna suffer. The price of the, the permits have already gone down from, I think the maximum was, they sold for one fifty. Recently, one sold for a hundred and ten thousand. So the price, the value of the permits already has decreased substantially.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dunbar, his question?
Oh, yeah, so you had said, you kind of touched on it again at the end there, but earlier you had said, we're putting the cart before the horse because Uber is coming back. Do you support Uber coming back? I mean, it sounds like we should wait until we let Uber come back in the city. I mean, that's sort of what you preface your argument on. So why shouldn't we let Uber back in or not let Uber back in in your opinion?
Well, Uber should be, would be allowed in if they would agree to go by the rules that we have to go by. You know what I mean? Their insurance requirements, their drivers having, you know, medical checks. They wouldn't agree to, to the terms that we're regulated on it. We're highly regulated.
So if Uber agreed to the regulations you have, you would be comfortable supporting them coming back in the city?
Well, I wouldn't be comfortable, but I, I don't, I don't see how you could keep them out. But, you know, they're, they're pretty much in all, all the states in the lower forty-eight and they have decimated the cab industry down in, down in the lower forty-eight. You go down to San, San Diego, we used to have hundreds of cabs out at the airport. There's no cabs at the airport anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Questions, Mr. Dunbar? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else wish to testify? We've got about five minutes left. What can be, sir?
My name is Arvin Lina. Been driving and operating a taxi and owning one for the past seventeen years, but been a taxi driver for twenty-five years. You know, I'd like to mention the reasoning why Assembly Evans, you know, thinks that, why we need to do this now with the anticipation of knowing that Uber is right around the corner or the TNC, so to speak. And, you know, it states that substantial areas are not being covered by the current system where Mr. Evans was on the, on the Transportation Commission and he himself stated numerous times that, why should we fix a system that works for ninety percent of the population? Those would be considered hillside, Girdwood, outline areas as rural areas, you know? So he stated on the record himself. But recently, Mr. Muster, through an option, through the needs and necessity, they, they met in Eagle River. Not one person, the Transportation Commission met there. Not one person from Eagle River showed up there to testify that there was a problem. Well, guess what? We went along and stated that, yes, we should have some permits issued out there and let's try it. Recently, we came up for option to be sold for the Eagle River area. They got, two of them got taken and then they got returned because there is no business. As Kevin stated, he was out there for seven days as an experiment. Checked in, checked out, twelve-hour shift there. There was one day, he did three trips. And what kind of trips? Four dollars and five dollars to the laundry man. So it, it costs money to operate this industry. And on average, I could assure you, I'll tell you from experience, it costs about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to operate a taxi cab under the regulations that we have. Mandatory insurance. Dispatch service, all this, there's a cost. Now, to add this many cabs, the pie is not gonna get any bigger. It's just gonna get smaller and a lot of bad things gonna happen. And Mr. Evans, you know, he himself has a paragraph here that they're anticipating such a, well, if the market doesn't fix itself in competition, well, you know what? You shouldn't be eliciting prostitution and, so we already know that something's gonna happen should there not be enough money out there for the drivers. There will be such things and I guess he already anticipates these issues. But, but look, to address a, a question that Mr. Peterson and Assemblyman Weddell done about the bar break, I, I've been involved, been involved with my association at FOA for the past twenty years. And we have worked extensively with the transportation and with CHAR, the organization that represents the, the liquor industry. And we've come every time at a dead end with them. They do want, they don't want solution. It's like blaming McDonald's, why people are fat, let's close McDonald's, you know? Because people are going, eating too many calories. So when the raids started occurring, crime started occurring during bar breaks, well, the liquor industry would come in front, Mr. Muster and, and, and the Transportation Commission has stated that the cabs is the problem. The reason we have crime during bar breaks is because there's not enough cabs out there to service them. But I could tell you, I've worked nights for five years and I love servicing the bars. But here's the problem. The current way, the way the, the system works is with them is they call, the bartender calls, and we, we, we go there, there's three other cabs that showed up there. Nobody's there, they're inside. We suggested to them numerous times, and the last time we met with Sylvia and John Potey, we even suggested the happy hour that the Assembly took on and, you know, where they keep after two o'clock.
Full bar safety hour.
Yes, for, and we were detrimental to telling CHAR that we need to do something like this.
Save your time, sir.
Yes, but real quick, CHAR, we told them that the bus station could be used as like at the airport, people know where the cabs are. Have chaperones with vans during that bar break if you want to take care of your customers. They refused that, they said, no way, we're a business. But what are we?
Thank you, sir. Questions, let me hear them. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony. For those who didn't get to testify, we should have another meeting on the, I think, on the second of December. Hope you have a chance then to speak. Just word of instructions over, another one, thirty minutes.